This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
Sunbury Videos. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment's silence. Please take your seats. Rule call, please. Ister, Savage, here. Brochus, here. Barnhart, here. Martina, here. There is an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting for personnel reasons. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Okay. Oh, go ahead, ma'am. Please say your name.
Linair Alum, Susquehanna Valley Community Education Project. I was here this evening at the request of the city administrator regarding 370 Market Street being removed from the nuisance building list. I did not see that on the agenda, but I'm inquiring about it as my colleagues are also here.
I have to work with Brianna. Okay. So that won't be on the meeting tonight, Mr. Backer. You'll have to work with Brianna. And that will be on the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other public comment at this time of agenda items? Okay, moving on. There is no old business, but there is new business. Jamie?
Thank you. Have you reset your regular meeting to convene the CDVG public hearing, please?
I'll reset our current council.
Thank you. All right, so tonight we're here to do the final public hearing for the city's 2024 CDVG funding. There are agendas available there if anybody's interested. The project selected for funding at the city is the Susquehanna Avenue Stormwater and Sewer Separation Phase Two for $258,529. Administration of the CDVG program for $50,000 for a total allocation of $308,529. This project outlined above will be incorporated into the city's three-year community development plan. There are a couple resolutions we have to review as part of our final public hearing. The first is the resolution to apply. This is a DCC form that states that the city-- the CEC is directed to submit the 2024 application to DCC on behalf of Sunbury and authorizes the mayor to sign all applicable application pages. The second resolution to review is the 504 compliance officer and grievance procedure resolution, which is also attached to the agenda. The resolution outlines the city's grievance procedure for residents to file a 504 accessibility complaint and names the city administrator as the local 504 compliance officer. And the final resolution for this evening's hearing is the fair housing resolution, which is also attached. And this resolution outlines how residents can file a fair housing complaint and the address of where those complaints can be sent. These resolutions will be discussed and acted on at the regular meeting after the public hearing is over. We also want to review proposed amounts for an application for 2024 CDVG discretionary funds. Again, that would go with the Susquehanna Avenue Stormwater and Sewer Separation Phase Two for up to $1,925,000, with administration being $75,000. It's not decided yet whether it will go for $1 million or $2 million, but maybe up to $2 million. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Here and now. We've got a journey here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I reconvene our council meeting. Moving on to the back to new business, the Americas agreement, Solicitor Weeks. What time is it?
I had your closing.
Oh, my gosh, sorry, Jamie. I'm moving on too quick. Sorry, I thought you were-- sorry. Jamie, back to you first.
Just missing me?
Sorry.
So I'm going to skip the engineering. We'll do that last. So I need council to take action to approve Resolution 24-032 for the Section 504 Officer and Grievance Procedure.
All right, I'll make that a motion. Do I have a second? Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes.
The second resolution is 2024-033 to apply for the CDVG fund.
I'll make that into a motion.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister? Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes.
And the third resolution is 2024-034 for the fair housing resolution.
I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes.
And then I have two other things. So the first is to get permission from council to solicit proposals for your CDVG three-year engineering. This would be for calendar year '25, '26, and '27. It's selected engineer who would then do the work on any CDVG projects during that time.
Second. Go ahead. Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
All right, I will get that sent out then to be prioritized. And the final item I have is the engineering proposal for Susquehanna Avenue Phase Two project from CES Engineering, who is your current CDVG engineer, in the amount not to exceed $589,000. That does sound like a lot, but we're looking at a, you know, six million-plus project. So let's see what happens about the project.
I'm going to give it more of a motion. Do I have a second? Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
And that will be paid out of the grant funds that are part of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Now Solicitor Weeks.
Okay. I prepared an agreement between the city, the Americas, and the Ister family concerning the parking lot located off Linden Street, where it's going to be repaved at the cost of the Americas Post Company. However, it's in the best interest of the city that the city retain the ability to inspect that parking lot in the area and to be able to re-enter, to fix anything that needs to be fixed, should it not be fixed by the landlord. And therefore, I have prepared that agreement. That's the agreement before you tonight. I'm going to ask that if we have a motion to approve the agreement such that it may be signed by Josh and they can move forward with their parking lot.
Question, anyone? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the agreement. Do I have a second?
I say--
Martina?
Yes.
Ister? Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Barnhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Backer, PennDOT resolution.
PennDOT made a request that we have a resolution that when they do work on South Second Street, which they will be doing in 2025, that they can work during the evening hours, or I should say overnight. So Joel, Solicitor Weeks put together a resolution and I had to go over the current--
Questions, anyone? All right, I'll make the motion to accept the PennDOT resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Councilman Barnhart?
I want to amend ordinance number 134-2 and 134-13 and 134-7.
Second. Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes. Councilman Ister, capital always IT upgrades.
We have celebrated discussing with numerous months regarding cameras. However, we've taken these upgrades with the IT for $7,248.38. That's just early phases of the north end of that Fourth Street strip on the avenue. Moral price, excuse me, cameras. Do you have any questions? Then you asked me.
Just a heads up, because we spoke last meeting about when the properties go up for auction, putting that money back in the IT thing and then possibly using some of that money from the IT stuff to do the cameras on Third, Fourth, and Fifth Street as well. So--
Well, we have a real event. We need to come and make sure that area--
Yes. Any questions, anyone, on the IT stuff? All right, just a little update on that as far-- oh, so we'll do the vote, sorry. So I'll second Councilman Ister. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Brochus? Yes.
Ister? And just sorry, those funds are coming from that money from the optic?
Correct, yes. And then just a little update on the IT. We had InterTech come in today, go through all the departments to see what the necessary software, computer upgrades may be moving forward. So I just want to give the council and the public a heads up upon that as well. So Councilman Savage?
I would like to, in the form of a motion, make a request for the city portion of taxes to Cheryl Fillmore, who owns property 351 North 11th Street, to be reimbursed due to a veterans exemption on January 12, 2024. It's my understanding this is the city portion. She may be requesting the reimbursement from the county and then if she chooses from the district, this is pretty normal. When somebody gets a veterans exemption to go to all three taxing bobbies.
Brochus? Yes. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes. I would also, in the form of a motion, like to ask for the approval of the abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of $197,147.72. Local fuels in the amount of $2,076.48 and private grants in the amount of $271,378.59 and payroll in the amount of $71,976.66.
Second. Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Brochus?
Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Discussion items, Mr. Backer, statewide LSA grant.
Statewide LSA grant is open again for applications. It is due November 30th of this year. I'm going to bring this up because this is-- I call it a catch-all grant. A lot of things go under this. Construction, demolition, infrastructure. Really, it really catches everything. The max you can go for is a million dollars. However, in my expertise, I would say do not expect to see that or close to that, quite frankly. And there is no match required.
Do we have any projects in mind in which the city would want to apply for the LSA grant four?
Would we want to do a million?
I don't know. But if that doesn't, I think a good one may be the skate park because of that fund and requiring the other grants. If you said you need a 30% match, I think that'd be a good one, considering we may not have the 30% match of whatever may need to be required. That's just a suggestion on my part.
I think there you can come back and tell us what's all the options are.
To be honest, pretty much every city, every single city project that we have going or want to do is eligible for this.
Do we need to pick, like, one project? That's what I'm asking.
In theory, you can put in as many applications as you want. However, I've seen if it's coming from one entity saying the money's going to come to us as the city of Sunbury, then we probably would have to pick one of our applications. I don't see us being awarded multiple applications at the same time.
Questions, anyone? I mean, this is my own personal opinion. I think, you know, I think the skate park would be a very good one for that grant. That's just my opinion. I'm not saying it's the right one. But, you know, considering, as we talked last time, how we need 30% and we may not have that. That's just my opinion. Kind of have a ballpark on what it was cost. But that's just my opinion. I'm not saying it's the right one. But does anyone else have any thoughts on projects that may be good for this grant?
Well, I can think of the city garage. I mean, looking for money. How are we making out the grant number of money for there?
I heard that we're still in the running, but haven't heard definitive yet. Come week or not, and I don't know when you're going to hear on that. I appreciate he's gotten LSA that.
Say it. Say it.
The study for the natural--
So there's another one good one. So, I mean, so I guess we have three projects we could discuss, see which ones are priorities, and come back next council meeting and see which ones we want to decide on. Does that work?
Yeah.
It's either November 1st or November 30th. I think we can't find it on here, but it'd be enough a little bit of time.
What is the average amount of the grant that you see?
And how soon must it be spent once you receive it?
Well, it's usually three years, I believe, is the grant contract once you sign on the dotted line. And it is November 30th. It's Dubai. And I'd say $100,000 max is what we probably--
And how long do you think it'll take you to fill out the application, then? Like, to say, because the next council meeting is the 14th, I think, whenever. I mean, about give you enough time to get all the information that you need to apply--
November 30th.
But so, I mean, is that still enough time?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay.
So I guess my next council meeting--
I'd say to another state, right?
Say that again.
The LSA can match it to others, like the Greenway, correct?
I don't think you can match that one because they're both steep.
That's why.
I'm pretty positive they did make this eligible to match. I'll double check, but--
I think maybe DC and R are, if it's like a federal part of DC--
Correct, yeah. I would have to check their working. But the DC and R ones that we have to go for, I'll double check, but I don't think this is eligible as match.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that grant or things, projects? All right, moving on. Boat launch lights. Jim, where are we at on them?
We're making progress.
So what do we mean by progress? We're here in progress for six months. So what's progress mean? If you don't want-- if we could get a little more detail with the public--
The way the materials were, yeah, it's like a product order.
Okay, so, I mean, so, like, so the next-- when it comes in, is that going to illuminate down there the problem?
Well, through light.
Okay, will all the lights be fixed at that point? Is only going to be one light be fixed? Or what, like, what's the game plan?
Our intentions are having all the lights.
Okay, so is there-- is there an estimated date when the mater-- like, when were they-- when were the materials ordering? Was there an estimated date when they are going to arrive?
Weeks ago.
So they were ordered weeks ago, so they should be coming in any day.
Oh, I don't want to say that.
I know, I don't want to put you-- I don't want to put you on the spot. I mean, it's only been six months now, but, you know.
But you gave it to the end of the year.
I know, but, you know, the lights down there, it's not a safe situation. It'd be terrible if someone got injured down there because we just don't want to put the lights.
I know, and we have safety I am too, but--
Well, safety six months ago. I mean, it'd be awful shame.
I haven't seen any fishermen down there for a while.
Well, the problem is-- see, it's funny, because I just drove past there Saturday night and there was, like, a dozen boats down there fishing. So you might want to get out there a little bit later.
Well, it's not a better time.
Well, it's because you don't fish, doesn't any other people?
Do I fish?
Well, not during the night, I mean.
No, it's too dark out.
I know. But that's when-- that's when the-- that's when the real on the--
How many lights?
So that's why, you know, if there were lights down there, you could see.
Phil, you fish?
Huh? You fish?
I live like he can't see.
See, I know. He doesn't-- he probably doesn't feel safe down there. He can't see.
I'm in bed like eight o'clock.
But, you know, a lot of people aren't, though. All right, so there's progress. Hopefully, the parts will be in soon to get them down there. All right, so moving on, police budget. The reason why I want to bring this up is the chief and I have been looking at the police budget not just for 2025, like, three, four, five years down the road. So the one thing that we had a suggestion to help taxpayers and not because-- everyone knows, not just in summary, but-- the normally law enforcement budget is normally 40%, 50%, 60% of municipal budgets. So with where we're at right now in our budget with, you know, being three officers down, we might be budgeted, use-- also not losing the benefits of those three officers. In theory, or theory, we should have a surplus in those line items by the end of the year. So what the chief and I are looking at, with the money we should have set aside, that we would have left, we'd like to set that aside in a reserve for the future usage of salaries. So when the contract or salaries increase, our line item for our budget now can stay the same and we can just pull from that line item to continue to balance that line item for the salary. So therefore, I'm just making up this number here. If it's a million dollars in 2024, it will still be a million dollars in 2027 when all the salaries have went up. We can just pull from that item because with helping Mr. Backer and the chief applying for grants, we're getting grants to cover certain salaries, different types of activities that we're doing. So it's just one way that we can keep that line item balanced for the next three or four years and continue to put money into that reserve. It's just like we have-- we wanted to do it, like, for parking lots and for buildings, things like that. I want to see what council's thoughts were on that. So, like, we're not facing issues four or five years down the road saying, "Oh, my gosh, the police are costing this much money," when we have a chance to stop that from happening. Just like we said--
Well, no, there'll still be cautious that much money.
No, but I'm saying we're trying to-- we're trying to put that money aside to plan for the future, just like as we talked about, you know, putting money aside for buildings and parking lots and those types of things. That's why we're trying to do the same thing on that aspect.
But a carryover normally helps us take in-- so it gets budgeted. And if everybody starts doing what you're saying, taking the surplus and setting it aside, you want to carry it.
No.
You want to take and do the next budget.
Can you actually carry a surplus over for salary? Doesn't it have to be carried over for a different-- can it be carried over for salary?
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I--
Do you think you know that?
I don't know.
Because I'm not-- I always thought you couldn't carry it. It would have to balance the budget or there was a certain way it had to go, but it couldn't be used for salary. So that can-- how do we find out if that can be done?
I wonder.
And my thought is maybe right along with your question. Lisa, I plug it, yeah. But I'm wondering if it's legal to kind of shuffle-- well, maybe legal is the wrong term. I don't know if it's the best budget practice to shuffle money into a reserve but then misrepresent what the line item is. I'd rather have-- I'd rather have the actual salary increases reflected, but also, I guess, both. I mean, I'd rather have the money kind of sitting there, ready to use, but also accurately reflect what it's going to be. And if we come in under--
I mean, we can-- I mean, we can still-- well, I'm just making a number. It says it's a million dollars. You can still make it 1.1 million, but use 100-- I'm just making a number-- $100,000 to, you know, cover the rest of the line item. I'm just trying to-- we're just trying to come up with ways to plan for the future financially because eventually, you know, it's like all our salaries, all our bills, like, we're not generating more tax revenue, but our normal-- our normal things are increasing regardless. So we're trying to come up with ways to be proactive down the road four or five years from now.
So with your-- I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So with the budget now, Josh, chief, but so-- let me just see if I can get this right. So, like, you guys have a budget of money that was allocated for the year. It's unspent, and now you want to just bank it for the next four budgets.
Well, yes. That's putting it simply, yes. But we're also planning so next year, obviously, the salaries aren't going to go up because of the contract. Obviously, the line items are going to go up. Obviously, our tax revenue is not going up. So somewhere, there's going to be cutting somewhere to balance that, not just in the police, but in the code, the DPW, everywhere. Salaries are going to go up and our tax revenue is not going up. So somewhere, we're going to keep cutting and cutting and cutting. And eventually, our normal bills are going to out-- we're not going to be able to cut anymore until we have to cut employees. So we have to cut employees, and you can only cut so many employees. I'm just saying across the board, so we're trying to be proactive about it.
So strategic planning for basically budgeting over the officers down the, down the way?
How many officers are we gonna be losing once they please?
Zero.
If nobody going, but we've originally, months ago, said we were gonna be losing officers.
Possibly for the last three?
Yeah, they, they went through the testing, they didn't score high enough. They wanna take the top highest whatever, they didn't score high enough, that's why. We were planning on them leaving, but they did not leave, so that, that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense, I see. And then we have some down in the academy, two or three?
Two.
Two, I thought we had three, but no.
One guy dropped out two weeks into it.
And then I thought we added another one to that.
Nope.
No?
Haven't added any. We have, we could do send in October, but I think we, I think a little different way that option.
My next question was, where do you spend with those two coming out of the academy? Same count wise, officer wise?
Officer wise, the most two coming out of the academy will be attending for budget for a lot of-
Ten full time.
Need another five full time.
Are your current budgets reflected in eleven?
Correct, yes. So it's just one of these things, like, we're trying to be proactive here, strategically plan here for the future, because not just like, let's say, not just with the police, but parks and rec, DPW, code, like the salary-
Across the city, but he just made a statement there. You're saying they're telling us, if the two out of the ca- academy comes, we have ten.
Correct.
We have a shortfall already, you just said we need five more.
Well, we would like five more.
We'd love to have five more.
Where do you think the money's coming from, chief?
Well, if I can say this, I would say that the less officers we have on the street, and we're handling six hundred calls a month, and we're not able to investigate the crime, and these citizens basically are being attacked, or have property damage, have this, have that going on, we're not able to investigate it, because we don't have enough people. We're doing a disservice to the public.
You can answer the question, though.
That's not gonna mean, that's not gonna mean you can come up with the money. But that's a, this is, but see, but, but, but what we're trying to say here, we're trying to strategically plan down the road here for what we have right now, to be able to keep that, to keep the officers that we have, and also plan down the road, if it's financially possible to do so with more officers.
Well, I'd just carry them. You just said we have a lot of numbers. Yeah, he said we need five more officers, gives us a reason why, which we're not seeing that. And I asked him where the money's coming from, and he doesn't know, apparently doesn't care.
No, 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 I, I'm getting this again, like, it's not that I don't care, 'cause I care very deeply about that, but it's not for me to come up with those funds. I can only allocate, I can only give you the service, you have to come up with the money for me to do the service. It's not for me, that's, that's a council.
I see where I'm coming from.
Right, but you said I don't care, and I-
I'll, I'll rephrase it, but then we oughta think about before we go to find more officers.
Well, you think about it, but that's why I put on part-time officers, to help cover this.
I understand, I mean, discuss that.
But I'm just saying, we have to, we have to do something new, because what we're doing is no longer gonna work three, four, five years down the road. Because if you look, everything is going up. Our tax revenue is not going up. So eventually, we're gonna hit a breaking point where our expenditures, we're gonna exceed our tax, I mean, our tax, our fees and everything coming in, and then what are we gonna do?
We do have to look at it realistically, because we are not going to be sustainable soon. But we also have to, once again, look at it realistically where we start. But I think if we figure out if we can actually use that surplus for a salary, or whatever we have to go about is where we should start to figure that out.
Was, did any of the, did you, did either of you have this conversation with Kevin about it again?
Well, depends who you talk to. Kevin says we can't do that, but I talked to someone else who worked with, uh, former representative Culver, and they said, yes, you can do this. So this depends on who you ask.
Well, why not?
But, because I don't know what the lea- what lea- what legally can be done, but like, if we, we can legally do, I think it's something we wanna look into. If we legally can't do it, okay, that's fine, but we also have to start looking at different ways to fund things, because eventually down the road, as everyone says, what we're, not even with the police, code, DPW, parks and rec, we're not gonna be able to sustain what we're doing. It's just the nature of the beast. So like, whether we wanna say the police, whatever, we have to start doing things differently, because the road we're on, eventually, we're gonna be in financial problems. So we wanna accept it or not.
I guess my, my only remaining thought is, right now, if we have unspent money, it, it's, it's sitting there, sitting in an account, and it's making interest, and-
I, I don't, you'd have to ask Kevin if that, like, if our general fund money is making interest, I don't know what he has to say, like, when you answer that question.
Then you're looking at a different kind of pie.
That's a budget question.
Okay.
So what's the cost of an officer out of the academy? Whether we're getting paid eventually out of the academy?
Forty-nine thousand five hundred?
Fifty thousand dollars, that's one mill of taxes. You wanna add five more, that's the, the-
Five mils.
Five mils of taxes, and I'm just trying to think, we will only, I don't agree about how we're gonna do it right now.
There's two and, I think, two and a half or three and a half, but that doesn't fix the problem long-term. The long-term problem is, we're not producing more revenue. Whether we, I'm just, I'm just saying we're gonna do this. If we even max out our mills at third, like, the problem's still not going away, that salaries are increasing, utilities are increasing, benefits are increasing, if we're not increasing our revenue or our taxes. So down the road, we're, we're gonna act, we're gonna eventually max out, it's just the nature of the beast. If we're not generating more tax revenue, or doing something new and different to get businesses or tax revenue in there, eventually, we're gonna hit that point. I mean, luckily, we haven't had to raise taxes in many years, but eventually, we're gonna have, eventually, we have to start looking at it at a different angle, because eventually, we're gonna hit that point.
But even if you put the money aside, say, even if you put the money aside, you're still kicking the can down the road. Because, but, so what's, what's, technically, it's two separate things, but what is the other side of it of, okay, you say you could put that money down the road and cancel the size too, instead of buying it three, four more years, the sustainability? What do we, what, what do you think on the other side?
Because that's just on the money we have right now, so the next four years, as we're getting more grants to do the different things that cover different parts of the salaries or for equipment, that can still go right in that account and still fund the account to get more and more aside. It's just like, if we do something with streets, I mean, with parking lots or buildings, like I said, every little bit putting in there helps, it helps, until we, so hopefully, we get businesses, or hopefully, we get jobs. But until, if we can, but what we're doing is not gonna continue to work forever. It, it, it's a proven fact, if you look, it's not gonna happen. And we're, are we gonna solve it here tonight? No, we're not, but if we're not looking four, five, six years down the road, ten years down the road, we're not gonna get there, and we don't have a ten-year plan. SRI's helping with that, but, I mean, the city itself, we don't have a five-year plan. We don't have a ten-year plan, and we have to get to that point.
Technically, technically, we're working on it, so it may not-
But tech, I mean, but, but great, but when's that gonna be done? Are we still gonna be at the point where we're at right now financially? Like, we can't wait, well, I mean, I'm just saying, Derek, like, when, when is the thing gonna be done?
I don't know.
See, like, we don't know, but we can't wait, okay, a year, two?
A year, I can't do it.
But I'm saying, let's say, like, one year, so, one year, we're still, we're still in the exact same situation a year from now. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying this is the right way, but we have to do something different. So that's, that's just my thoughts. So, any other questions, anyone?
I just wanna know, 'cause we all know Kevin's opinion, just, I'll find out the legal, the cancer you're doing.
Well, I mean, if treasurer, if treasurer troop was here tonight, he could give us his opinion. I'll tell you his opinion, it says, no, we can't do it. I'll tell you that right now, probably somewhere-
We're gonna be known, but I wanna know why it's, that might be different.
Well, that may require some extra work and, you know, moving the money around. All right, anything else for discussion items, anyone? All right, announcements, we're still accepting letters of interest to the seven open spots of the nuisance abatement appeals board. Uh, blueprint community downtown will be October twelfth from eight AM to five PM. Fireman's memorial service is October thirteenth from one to three. The Halloween parade will be taking place on October seventeenth, starting at seven PM, the normal route. City Hall Haunted Hall of Treats will be October twenty-fifth from twelve to three, that is a half-day of school. Police trunk or cheat will take place at fighters parking lot on October twenty-sixth from six to nine. Sunbury Public Auction is October twenty-eighth, prior to the, prior to the council meeting. Uh, on the second floor here at four PM, rich, you need must register in order to bid. Uh, the first budget meeting will take place on October fourteenth, here in the council chambers at five PM. The next council meeting will be here, also on October fourteenth at six fifteen PM. And now, is there any public comment at this time?
I have one.
Please go, say your name, sir.
I'm, 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 um, I've been looking at my people before this story, and it comes to stand out. To, um, to the East End Gardens, which is fun days in my area. The place called Central Park, that was managed by a woman, and so, um, the garden is, um, very well for a long time, and I've been very happy with that. Maybe a lot of people want to, uh, be community service minded, uh, but, what issue I'm running into is there's a, a tree in the middle of the park, and what's happening is the tree roots are, um, busting up the sidewalk for the mind, and so, uh, I never canceled the house in twenty-three, I think that was, you know, wow, you know?
It was last, last fall, I think, Brian?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, twenty-three, huh? And he discussed it, I, I, he didn't get the bottom of some of the beds, and we get old, and he, they did that, they did that really, it's, it's fixed, but what is not fixed is the safety issue that, um, the roots have created a three-inch kind of job off in the middle of the park. And I had it from Jim that, uh, that was blamed, uh, because, but what I need to know is, I, I didn't do the garden in twenty-three, because I was hopeful that I could gather Jim's way and figure out the people to do it in twenty-three. I did the garden in twenty-four, and it's done now, and I'm feeling well. You can go look at it if you want to, um, flowers pretty, uh, people eating the food, it's good. Um, I need to know if it will be safe enough in twenty-five to, um, have people with disabilities in that space, um, because I know people creep over that area and different things, uh, um, Jim, what's the timeline? Looking, you mentioned that you were ordering for swing slayer, and then, and then that would be done at some point, right?
Yeah, well, the other evening when we spoke, Brian, what I'll do is get ahold of contractor. Then you and I have been speaking about those swings. You can't get swings anymore because of my building. They make a, almost like a bench swing, like a glider back in the day. I just talked to Craig from Dumar this morning, uh, Donnie, uh, Healy, Healy's associate, don't get me your price, I thought about it last week. What we might do, Brian, is is they can do that area you're referring to around the tree, that tree has created the issue, and get those pieces of concrete out of it this year yet. I'll speak to Aaron tomorrow morning, see if we can get in there before winter comes, so that way you'll be ready for the planters. I know we did the planters last year, and then we'll just have to do the swings, or the gliders they call now, after the fact. But I have your number on my phone, Brian, what I'll do, get ahold of him, and give you a call back, do you an update, how's that?
All right.
Because I would really like to continue the garden in twenty-five, but I don't mind, so people are very concerned, and the sidewalk is not gonna, you know? Does that make sense to you?
Yes, Brian, you plan for twenty-five, and we'll get you your, uh, the area around that tree stuff cleaned up for you.
All right, thank you.
Your night's long.
Thank you, Brian. Ben, everyone had anything?
Yes, uh, I agree with everything you said, just a few additions, reminder things. Uh, first off, this one really doesn't matter, but whenever you have concrete sidewalk things coming up around a tree, people always say it's the roots. Sometimes it is the roots, sometimes it's freezing and falling, that doesn't. Uh, is that because of roots somehow? But it's not necessarily the roots growing, but that doesn't matter, somehow, it has to be fixed. Uh, the main issue is, it's, it's a present danger. I remember one day I put a traffic cone up there, traffic cone walked off or whatever. Uh, temp, I think the temporary solution is to spray paint with bright orange, neon, whatever, you know, fluorescent, whatever it is, paint, uh, there to identify it as a hazard, because it's, it's not just about fixing it as soon as we can, but it's making, it's, it's remediating the danger that exists now. Uh, I will say I have one boy scout, at least one boy scout, who's interested in helping, assuming that he's permitted to with the city and liability or whatever, and that it's able to be done safely, uh, to the extent that you could benefit from a volunteer, whether it's just putting down the spray paint, or maybe leveling off the concrete or whatever it is that people would do. There is a, who's one volunteer available at no charge, uh, and, uh, I just thank you for your attention to this, 'cause I don't wanna see anybody get hurt.
Thank you, Ben, I'll give you a call, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please say your name.
Julie Ocker, I'm here representing summer revitalization and also the downtown Sunbury Upright community team. Um, I'm here to remind you about the Reimagined Sunbury Business Dinner and Discussion. All of you should have received this invitation, and thank you Mayor Brochus and Councilman I, uh, Barnmark for signing up, also to Craven, thank you also for signing up. If the rest of you could also sign up, I think you're gonna find that this is a very valuable experience. It's going to be, um, very creative and interactive, and it's gonna get people talking, and then ultimately, it's going to give the downtown Sunbury, uh, team that input and information that we can then use when we come up with our plan and start taking action. This particular event is focused, you know, we said our team was gonna address the underutilization of both commercial and residential spaces specifically in our downtown. This one is more focused on that commercial and business side. But it's just business owners, it's property owners, and other organizations and agencies that have a stake in the downtown should also be, are also welcome to attend. Now, we did send out emails several times in the last couple of weeks. I know it's easy to get missed, but, um, the RSVPs are due today. So there is a little QR code at the bottom here, uh, so I'll make sure you have this so that you can scan it, you can actually RSVP on the spot. The next thing I wanted to mention was October twelfth, and thank you for that, including that in your announcements. That activity will be more along the lines of residential focus, community focus. And, um, there'll be more information to come out about that, but it also is gonna be a very interactive, uh, creative space, where people will be invited to have free conversations about what they love about Sunbury, what they would like to see happen in the downtown. Again, getting that community input before we move forward with developing a plan. So, um, we'll be spreading the word about that. But do you just remember to RSVP tonight for that dinner, that is next week, Monday evening? Really appreciate your, starts at four thirty with the social hour. There is free meal and free drinks, to help us, I guess, have good ideas. And then, um-
Place of courage.
And then there will be, like I said, a dinner, and, and different phases of the, of the, uh, process will, will be done throughout the evening. So it's not like you come, have a drink, sit down, eat dinner, and then listen to a lecture. You are gonna be asked to participate, so come ready. All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Jody.
I think it'd be a good thing you knew the guy, too.
I'm on the, I'm on the-
He's on the team!
I'm on the team, I'm on the-
No!
Just wanna make sure you're squared out.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, sir.
Brian Zula, um, I was here for the last meeting to talk about the Susquehanna Avenue project. I just had a couple more questions. Uh, the beginning of this meeting was mentioned Susquehanna Avenue project phase two. Could someone just explain what all's involved with phase two?
Phase two is the same as phase one, it's just going to go from packer to julian.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and I know Councilman Ister was down last Friday, I believe, you were down there looking around. Just wondering if you noticed, some of the sidewalks are uneven, and at least two of my neighbors have asked, with the new sidewalks being poured, having to match up with the old sidewalks, in some areas, they're sloped, where they come together in both directions. And I was asked, when it starts to snow and stuff, if somebody falls because the sidewalks aren't flat? Who's liable for that?
Brian, I'm gonna have to look at the, do you have the addresses?
I don't have them on me, but I can get them for you.
Addresses and pictures, send them to me, Brian.
Okay.
And, uh, I'll turn them over to the contractor. Now, you will see slopes at the end, that are pretty eighty-eights.
Right, yep.
Remember, everybody had a, let's say, a six-inch curve before, now at the ends, of course, it's down to the one percent.
Right.
And you have the one-inch lip and so forth, that whole area, you could, you start taking one percent, you might be coming back fifteen feet real easy.
Yep.
And when you hit that next, the next pad, there'll be change from the slope to the flat. And that situation, I don't know without looking at it, right?
Yeah, this was, this was like in the middle of the block, though, and, and there's some places where it's, it's sloped pretty good in both directions. I know, um, Saxon's right across the street from us, their sidewalks weren't taken out, and the way they have the boards laid out, the new sidewalk is gonna be probably two inches lower, so it's gonna be sloped pretty good, um-
And here again, as you know, for your situation, you're pretty level, but on the other side, there's some areas over there where the front porch sits higher.
Yep.
Okay, and when you come across, you have to pick that next home up, and pick that front porch up. And then, of course, there's a seven and a half inch rise per step, so you have to figure all these equations.
Right.
You can't get a lot to work. And, uh, but, if you give me the information, I'll look it over and turn it over to the contractor.
Okay.
And you and him met last week, and that's all taken care of.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, sir.
Uh, Joe Bartolo, I, I had a couple online questions. Uh, one was, somebody wanted to know when the handicap parking signs would go back up on Susquehanna Avenue?
My guess is when the street is completely done open, and then when everything gets lined and striped. You know, I, I doubt we have a timeline, 'cause we're waiting for the street to get done, so.
Okay, and, uh, the ordinance that was amended, one thirty-four, what was that about?
It was just updating some of the outdated ordinance with, uh, rental properties bringing the codes up to the new twenty twenty-four standards. I mean, there's, I mean, there's copies of them, if they wanna stop in the code office to see the amended changes, but to list them all, I, I don't have a-
But it was just, uh, just updating the code, the codes that were about?
It was just updating them, yes.
Okay.
Is that it, Joe?
Yep, that's it.
All right, any other public comment at this time? All right, I adjourn this meeting.